Good evening. I am Ramona Curtis, Director for Diversity Outreach Programs at Tulsa Community College in the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I am so happy to be here back in my hometown to moderate this town hall meeting. I want to thank Dr. Newman and Commissioner Miller for this opportunity and for their leadership in coordinating this event. Dr. Newman, we also want to especially thank you as you are on the front line battling this virus every day in our community. We also want to thank all of our frontline workers, our hospitals, first responders, business, and other entities that are essential. We thank you for keeping our city and our county running during this very trying time. We welcome you to this virtual town hall meeting on the COVID-19 impact on communities of color. This town hall meeting is being shown on the City of Waco's City Cable Channel, WCCC.TV. Channel 10 if you have Spectrum or Grande. It is also being livestreamed to viewers at the City Cable website, WCCC.TV, and through the Family Health Center and City of Waco's Facebook pages. This town hall is hosted by the City of Waco, McLennan County, and the Family Health Center. Want to talk a little bit about the purpose of this event. It is to answer your questions regarding the health, economic, and social impact of COVID-19 on communities of color in McLennan County. We are here to discuss the impact on the communities of color. We want to save lives here today, and to the best of our ability, we want to ease any anxiety. We will give you information that you need to stay healthy and to endure as we grow into our new normal. At this time, I have the honor of introducing our panelists for the evening. And they are Dr. Floyd Berry, pediatrician for the Family Health Center; Dr. Eliana Newman, family medicine doctor; Dr. Kelly Reynolds, who is our chief medical officer at the Family Health Center; County Commissioner Patricia Chisholm-Miller, Precinct 2; Councilwoman Andrea Bearfield, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1; Councilman Hector Sabido, District 2; and Annalee Looper, immigration attorney, American Gateways. Thank you, panel. Before we get into our questions, I'm going to put up the slides so that you will know where to ask those questions, how to submit those questions. The slide, the slide, okay. As you see, you can submit your questions through email at townhall@wacotexas.gov. Again, email questions@townhall@wacotx.gov. Or by phone, there's the dial-in number there, 1-848-220-3300. And you'll need the conference ID, but you do not need the host PIN. So, let's just drop, jump right into a question that's been on everybody's mind, and that is a question of testing. I'm going to direct this question to Dr. Newman. Please share with us the most recent McLennan County coronavirus data, cases, testing, and deaths, and can you include race, gender, and age with that? And some more questions that everyone's been asking is, what is happening now with testing? Who's being tested? Is there a plan to test the most vulnerable community first? So, Dr. Newman, would you handle that question, please?
Yes. So, testing definitely has been one of the questions that has been most on people's minds, and that has had kind of a change in the way that we have addressed it. I think a lot of the big concerns that came initially were from the fact that we did not... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The initial problems were nationwide. We had a shortage of tests, and so when we started testing, we were testing based on very specific criteria. You had a fever, you had a cough, you were in a high-risk area, or had a known exposure to somebody who was positive. Since then, we are actually testing a lot at pretty much the same rate as the rest of Texas. We're doing about 200 tests a day now, and we have changed from now that our testing capacity has improved. It's still not exactly completely where it needs to be, but it has improved. We've expanded, based on the CDC guidelines, what the symptoms are for testing, which now also include body aches, diarrhea, GI upset, fatigue, several other criteria also are included in that. There are, in general, there have been three places, three or four places that you can get tested in Waco, and that includes Family Health Center, the Ascension Group, which is Providence, and Hillcrest, and one of the urgent cares. But you needed to have a doctor. There wasn't kind of a free, you can just go and get tested. Now, as we're starting to slowly open up, we are being more aggressive about testing. We're testing anybody that has symptoms, anybody that we have concerns about, definitely high-risk groups, and other people that are on the front line if there are any concerns. In general, though, you still need to have a doctor in order to be tested, and at Family Health Center, we're doing a lot of things to try to facilitate that process, to make it easier for people to get a doctor and come in and get tested. We actually have a new number, 254-313-4610. If you call before 2:00, we can usually get you in the same day for COVID testing, and we can also help establish you with having a doctor. I'm going to say that for our Spanish speakers. Entonces, ¿quién puede tener un examen para checar por el coronavirus? Inicialmente esto era difícil porque nosotros no teníamos muchas pruebas, eso era en todo el país, no más aquí en Waco. Nuestra capacidad de hacer exámenes se ha mejorado mucho. Ahora, si tienes cualquier preocupación que tienes el virus, usualmente te podemos mirar el mismo día para hacerte un examen. Los lugares que lo hacemos es en el Centro de Familia, Family Health Center, y en las clínicas privadas asociadas con los dos hospitales de la ciudad. Para, si no tienes un doctor, eso sí es muy importante, si hay el virus o no hay el virus, para conseguir un doctor. Ahorita en Family Health Center estamos tratando de facilitarlo, y estamos haciendo eso dando un nuevo número que es 254-313-4610. Si se llama ese número antes de las 2:00 de la tarde, usualmente te podemos mirar el mismo día, si tienes cualquier preocupación que en ese momento tiene síntomas de COVID-19. Entonces, es muy importante si tienes preocupaciones, que ahora tenemos más capacidad de hacer el examen, y queremos hacerlo por ustedes.
Thank you. While you, Dr. Newman, if you could give that number one more time, and we're going to switch over to the COVID-Waco website, so our community viewers will know where they can go for more information on testing. So, you can go straight from the city's website. Where you're looking at now is the city's website. You can click on the COVID updates and information. It will take you to covidwaco.com, or you can go straight to covidwaco.com. And where you see, if you scroll down and you see Home, and right next to Home is Getting Tested, you click on there, and you can scroll down there, and you can get more information about where to answer those questions and where testing occurs. Thank you so much. I want to get back to this question of COVID cases in McLennan County. If you could break that down by race and gender, if we could have a panelist do that so that everyone would know who's getting it, what those breakdown numbers are.
Dr. Reynolds, do you have those?
I may have lost track of ours. So... Yes, I've got the, as far as the number of cases. We've had, we have 92 active cases, 81 people have recovered, and four people have died from the COVID. I've got some information as far as race on the patients who have died. Two were African-American, one white, and one Hispanic. They were all male, and three of the four were over 60. One was aged 40 to 49. I don't have at this time the race, gender, and age for all the cases, but I can try to get that for the panel if you would like me to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Here's a question coming in from a participant, and I'll let our healthcare professionals tackle this question. "I'm expecting to give birth this summer, and home birth is not an option. What is being done to ensure our local hospitals are safe places to give birth?" And the part two to that question, "Are there any plans to prioritize testing for all healthcare workers, including those who do not work directly with COVID patients?"
So, I'll take that question. And so, both at our clinics and at the hospital, we've been working very hard to make them safer places for everybody to come, and that definitely includes our labor and delivery. At Hillcrest, which is where I do labor and delivery, our current guidelines are 48 hours prior to you coming in, if you're coming, if you're going to be induced, you will go in and have a COVID test prior to that. If you just come in in labor and we didn't have a chance to do a test, we do a rapid test as you come in, and we usually get those results back pretty quickly. We have been doing, the hospitals in town have done all sorts of really enormous things to try to improve the safety of going to the hospital, the same way that we've done that in the clinic, and that includes limiting visitors. And so, most people can have one visitor, especially when you're in labor, and nobody else. At Providence, usually your visitor stays with you and doesn't leave. At Hillcrest, there's a little bit more wiggle room, but again, we're very cautious about limiting outside exposure into our hospitals. As some of us go into the hospital, we get checked for symptoms, and it's very encouraged for us not to go in if we are sick. And so, yes, we're doing, we're doing everything possible to make it safe to have your baby in the hospital, which is the safest place as we know. If, currently, we're working towards a strategy as we're opening up about priorities for testing. First priority is always people that are sick and that have symptoms. Another priority is people who have any kind of exposure and that extended list of symptoms, and among those people are healthcare providers, who, again, who have symptoms or who have any concerns. We're not just testing anybody and everybody, only because testing is still, not, we don't, we're not at the capacity where we can test every single person, so we're prioritizing who gets tested. But healthcare workers are definitely higher, have a lower threshold of when we test. But, and we do other precautions like maintaining our six feet of social distancing, washing our hands often, and everybody that comes into our healthcare system, employees and visitors are asked to wear masks or facial coverings, and so those are the other ways that we try to keep people safe. I'm going to translate that to Spanish. Entonces, ¿está bien poder ir al hospital si voy a tener un bebé? ¿Qué es lo que estamos haciendo para mantener las mamás y los bebés libres de esta infección? Estamos haciendo varias cosas, manteniendo nuestros lugares de trabajo, el hospital y la clínica más seguros, tratando de hablar con gente antes de que entren, para ver si tienen síntomas, a mirarlos. En esos casos, en la clínica, los miramos afuera primero, antes de que puedan entrar al edificio, usamos cubiertas en la cara. Todavía la gente adentro del lugar de trabajo, tratamos de mantener nuestros seis pies de distancia, lavar las manos seguidos, etc., todas las otras cosas que hemos recomendado para ustedes. Las otras cosas que estamos haciendo para asegurar la seguridad de nuestras mamás y nuestros bebés, estamos manteniendo, haciendo el examen de COVID. Si sabes que tienes que venir al hospital y estás planeando tú provocando un parto, planeándolo, hacemos el examen 48 horas antes de que vengas. Si nomás tú presentas ya lista para tener tu bebé, entonces, ya hacemos la prueba cuando llegas. Las pruebas que hacemos en el hospital, tenemos los resultados más rápido para protegerte a ti y a tu bebé, y otra vez todos usamos cosas para cubrirnos y protegerte.
Thank you very much. I want to remind our viewers that if you have questions, just email us at townhall@wacotx.gov. Again, that's townhall@wacotx.gov. I want to get into the health disparities piece to what we're talking about today. And Dr. Berry, I have a question for you as we're talking about health and these communities of color. What advice do you have to our communities of color regarding staying healthy and accessing healthcare, especially during this pandemic?
Is my mic alive? You know, one of the things that people have to understand, I think, is that there's not a few things you can do, that this is a big problem, it requires a large-scale thing. The companies that make medications, antivirals, the companies that design vaccines and stuff, they'll take care of that. Part of this is public health, with the mayor of Waco and hospital teams and family practice leadership, making rules for the city, Governor Abbott making rules for the state of Texas with his team, the president and his team, they'll take care of that. But people have to, and particularly, remember that this is a bigger hit to the minority community, so the minority population has to double down and do things that they can do, simple things that are credible, like the social distancing that really works, always wearing a mask to decrease that transmission, taking care of your health, being as healthy as you can in terms of personal things you can do, exercise, getting up to sleep, those kind of things. Medical care, if you have medical problems, that's, those medical comorbidities increase risk and risk of bad outcome, and so you have to see your doctor. There's many ways to do this, on the phone, there are video conferences, some things we have to see you in person, some things we have to examine you, listen, physically examine, and those kind of things, and the doctor can help with that. If you have any questions, you call your medical place where you receive care. You don't have someone that's available and can be arranged. The other thing is, people have pre-existing mental health conditions. Those have to continue treatment. You have to continue seeing your therapist. There are many people who are undiagnosed who have big mental health conditions, and they need to be seen to evaluate those. Many families, many people who don't have generalized anxiety disorder are nervous and very worried about this, and there are people who we have in the medical profession who can see you and help you with that. Many children and teens are worried about the family. There are people who can help you talk with your children. So, for the minority community, with everybody, but particularly because there's a bigger hit, I think you have to take more effort on these things and do more to protect your health, and there are a lot of things you can do.
I'm going to repeat that, and thank you so much, Dr. Berry, for making those statements and making them so clear, because, again, that's the main focus of this town hall, is because we know that there are disparities, there have been disparities for a long time, and this virus is bringing them more to light, and we want to take action to try to diminish some of those inequities, especially as they are coming so clearly to light in this virus and how we're seeing them. So, I'm going to just repeat what Dr. Berry said, because it was so powerful and important in Spanish. Entonces, ¿qué puedes hacer tú para tu salud? Nosotros sabemos que este virus está pegándole a nuestras comunidades, a la comunidad de la gente afroamericana y los latinos muy duro. Nosotros estamos muriendo en números más grandes, y ya antes de esto, nosotros sabemos que estas comunidades tienen más problemas con otros problemas de salud, incluyendo diabetes, presión alta, azúcar. Entonces, ahorita es muy importante que usted tome acciones para mantenerse saludable. Las compañías están trabajando en vacunas, están trabajando en medicinas, pero ese tipo de cosa está en un futuro. Lo importante ahorita es que usted tome control de su salud. Estamos haciendo lo más fácil que regrese a ver su doctor, que tome sus medicinas. Hay unas visitas que podemos hacer, se llama chat house, or la computadora, parecido a lo que estamos haciendo ahorita, pero a veces tienes que venir al doctor, al doctor que tiene que ver, examinar, y otra vez, como dije en la otra pregunta, estamos haciendo lo posible para que sea un ambiente seguro para ustedes, pero hacer las otras cosas para mantenerse saludable, incluyendo haciendo ejercicio, viendo a alguien para su salud mental si es necesario, tomando sus medicinas, siguiendo las otras recomendaciones que les hacemos sobre su salud, evitar cosas que sabemos que les hacen mal. Es muy importante que, para que usted haga su parte, para mantenerse saludable en este momento, porque nosotros sabemos que esta enfermedad está pegando duro en nuestras comunidades.
Thank you so much. We may come back to the health disparity piece, but we have a few questions that have come in, and I want to make sure that those questions get asked. And so, Commissioner Miller, and perhaps our councilwoman and councilman who are on the board, I mean, on the panel here, we have elected officials on both sides of the aisle working on our communities, making them safer for many reasons, especially as we come back to our world of work. There are a few questions here about childcare facilities being opened. Some have never closed, some have recently opened with limitations, some are remaining closed. Can you give us some instructions and guidelines, perhaps from the CDC or others, following our local health community guidance on opening those up? And there's even a question on garage sales and things like that. People are looking at, what are we doing here to, a call to action to get us back to work?
Okay, well, I'll jump in and speak first. When we're battling a condition such as the coronavirus and a COVID-19, that we have no cure and we have no treatment, we have to count on our natural body defenses to fight it off should we contract it. That being said, minority communities are less healthy for reasons that are not entirely their own. In fact, the majority of reasons, the fact that they are less healthy are not their own, and so they have to take precautions as far as going out in public and making contact socially. Garage sales, I didn't hear the other part of it. Although we are slowly reopening the state, county, and the city, we still have to understand that COVID-19 is still here, and we still have to maintain the safety of ourselves and our family and our community. And so, I would urge especially communities of color, where we see that underlying conditions affect how we fight off the coronavirus, for us to take those safety precautions and adhere to social distancing still, to only go out for essential errands and businesses. We don't need to start traveling as if we have solved this. We're simply trying to reopen and give people a pathway to normalcy, to try to get back to a new normal. But we still need to guard ourselves, engage our activity, as if we understand that we still have to be safe. We still need to use the face covering. We still need to use the social distancing. We still need to maintain group contact with 10 people or less. We need to do those things.
And I'm going to translate for her, if that's okay, for our Spanish-speaking community as well.
Sí, sí.
Este, pues ella dijo que, este, ya que estamos abriendo la economía otra vez, ¿qué está haciendo los, este, las personas que están en oficina para ver que todos estén bien? Y Patricia Miller comentó que hay unas cosas que debemos de hacer nosotros como personas de color, y más como afroamericanos y latinos, que no estamos tan saludables como los otros, y todo, y cualquier vez, no es culpa de nosotros a veces que no estamos tan saludables, pero como quiera, cuando salgamos al público, hay que tener, este, distanciamiento, este, social, de seis pies, que entre usted y otra familia, pero también hay que, aunque nuestro cuerpo, este, puede a veces, este, pelear contra el virus, pero como quiera, hay que cuidarnos y ser, este, sabio en cómo vamos a salir, a hacer las cosas esenciales. No quiere decir que todo va a regresar a la normalidad, ya que está abriendo la economía, pero ya que estamos abriendo algunas cosas, como quiera, hay que tener precaución y cuidado mientras que vamos a comprar comida, a hacer otras cosas que, este, que se necesita hacer para la casa y para su familia. And I'm going to, if it's okay, I'm going to also just share a little bit of my thoughts on that as well. I think it's very important, even as a local official, that we do see the economy opening up again, but we also have to make sure that it's done in a safe and wise manner, especially for us, the people of color, that we, our health might not be where it needs to be. If, we have to take extra precaution, like that physical distancing, like that face covering, then, and even though we are accustomed to being around our family members and accustomed to doing gatherings, and we're getting into that time of year where we like to have barbecues and get together with our friends and loved ones, it's also very important that we take every precaution to still try to maintain ourselves in place as much as possible. There isn't a cure yet, and we see that COVID-19 is very real, and so I do say that, yes, let's begin to open things up, but also in a safe way that will not jeopardize people's health or even their lives, because that's the most fearful part of it.
Thank you so...
Also, one of the things that we need to make sure, and as childcare facilities were opened for essential workers, because there was no, they had to go, our healthcare workers and first responders, from my understanding, they, the greater number of childcare facilities will be looked at in the second phase, determining and going from the protocols that those childcare facilities that were set in place for the essential workers followed. But one of those things that affects us all, and especially communities of color, is that as the economy opens back up, we have to go back to work. You know, you've been out of work, or if you're, you know, as this phased approach goes back, you know, so do the loss of unemployment insurance and those kinds of things, and so we're going to have to figure out what childcare looks like and how that opens up in our Phase 2. But it is essential that it is done with complete dedication to the safety and well-being of our people.
Thank you very much. I want to continue again with our health disparities, and this question is for Councilman Sabido. So, it centers around xenophobia. How much has xenophobia played in the role in what is happening in some of these minority communities amidst the COVID-19 crisis? And can you tell me a little bit about initiatives that are in place in McLennan County to counteract this?
Yeah, so it is no secret that it has played a part in it, and so, while we know that it is a hard thing to tackle all at one time, but we understand that it has to be done and it has to take place. And so, I think there have been some initiatives in McLennan County that, and in the City of Waco, that have begun to dissect and really look at the issue, but we understand that there is a long road ahead of us and how we combat that. And so, we know that it's going to take many people coming to the table and saying, hey, we need to all come together and work together, but in the end, I mean, I know that it's going to be something that's going to take time and patience and preciseness and work to move forward from it.
Well, we have several questions in line with immigrant status, our immigrant community, and I'm hoping that Annalee Looper, our... and I'm hoping that Annalee Looper, our attorney here, our immigration attorney here, can answer some of our questions with regard to some of the scary pieces of individuals wanting to get tested. Will I, will ICE get my information? How will contact tracing put my family at risk? And issues of public charge and DACA? Can you speak to those issues when it comes to addressing our immigrant community?
Hey, Annalee, before you go, Ramona, is it okay that question that she just asked? Can we do it in Spanish also for our Spanish?
Absolutely, please do.
And I'm sorry, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Newman to do that, please. I'm sorry, Annalee, I just want to make sure that we cover that in Spanish as well.
Absolutely. Entonces, estamos hablando, ¿qué rol toma diseminación?, sería la palabra que estamos usando. Y nosotros sabemos que se afecta. Nosotros sabemos que esta situación está teniendo un gran impacto, no solo en la salud física y mental de nuestras comunidades, en la situación económica, estamos sufriendo a niveles a veces desapropcionados. Nosotros sabemos que otra vez estos no son cosas que empezaron solo con el virus. Han habido problemas y inequidades donde las cosas no son parejas ya por tiempo. No todo se puede componer del día a la mañana, pero posiblemente podemos tomar esta oportunidad de este tiempo difícil para buscar una mejor manera de tener una sociedad donde todos tenemos el acceso a poder luchar por nuestro bienestar y por nuestra mejoría. Entonces, sí, hemos escuchado el sufrimiento de nuestras comunidades, hemos escuchado que a veces nos sentimos más desamparados, pero por eso estamos aquí hoy, para dejarnos saber que estamos escuchándolos. Hay gente en el sistema de salud y en el sistema político que está muy interesado en su bienestar y queremos que ustedes compartan con nosotros y buscar una mejor manera adelante para nosotros y para nuestro futuro.
Gracias.
Claro.
To answer the question about immigration issues we've been seeing, unfortunately, in February, the presidential administration announced a new public charge rule and it just happens to coincide with the virus starting. So this public charge rule basically states that people who are going to be dependent on government benefits are inadmissible to the United States. So it, it's actually a relatively limited rule and it only applies in the majority of cases to people applying for permanent residence, but it's had a major chilling effect on the immigrant community seeking assistance, including medical assistance, for a variety of issues. And so thankfully, the immigration services did make an announcement after COVID came out and explicitly said, look, anybody who needs testing or treatment for COVID should get it. It will not be considered in the public charge determination. But again, public charge really only applies to people applying for permanent residence. So if you are an undocumented immigrant and you aren't in the process of applying for permanent residence, or if you're a permanent resident and you're applying for citizenship, this rule does not apply to you at all and you should seek any medical care that you need. Even if you are in the process of applying for permanent residence, talk to your attorney, but you should seek medical attention. And yes, there, there has been some concern and I've heard from the Family Health Center that there are rumors that if you seek treatment there, ICE will be able to get that information. So your medical information is protected under HIPAA laws. You're, and I know from the Family Health Center that they are not even collecting immigration information, much less would they turn that information over to ICE. In fact, the majority of times, people run more of a risk of being detected by ICE from their own social media posts than they do from seeking medical attention.
Entonces voy a decir lo que dije. Si ustedes necesita cualquier tipo de tratamiento médico, aunque ustedes endocumentados, quizás aplicando para residencia, debe buscar ayuda médica y puede usar los servicios de centros de salud familiar, como ustedes traduzcan su nombre. Y eso no afecta cargo público. Entonces, la ley de cargo público dice si usted va a ser dependiente de beneficios del gobierno, no va a calificar, aplicar para residencia aquí en los Estados Unidos, pero solo aplica a ciertas personas, personas aplicando para residencia. Si usted es endocumentada o usted tiene residencia y está aplicando para ciudadanía, esta ley no aplica a usted. Y tampoco aplica si sus niños son ciudadanos y están usando beneficios. Está bien. Entonces, de cualquier modo, si usted necesita ayuda médica para tratamientos de COVID, no hay ningún problema con su caso migratorio si usted busca esta información. Y no, no debe tener temor de que, por ejemplo, el centro de familia salud va a compartir su información con ICE, no van a hacer eso, y ni ellos obtengan información de estatus migratorio. Entonces, muy, muy, muy importante, si usted necesita este tipo de ayuda, debe buscarlo.
I think, sorry to keep talking, but one other issue is stimulus money. And so this is a really hard information for immigrants. Many undocumented immigrants and mixed-status families will not be receiving stimulus money. So if someone submits their tax return with another person that has an I-10 number, an individual identification number, even though they've paid taxes, they will not qualify for the stimulus money. There has been, I actually think it was yesterday, a lawsuit was filed on behalf of U.S. citizen children against the government for excluding them from stimulus money. Because U.S. citizen children, if they have an undocumented parent on their tax return, are not receiving any of the stimulus money. The same goes if you're a U.S. citizen but a married to an undocumented person and you file your taxes together, you won't be receiving stimulus money. So there are two, well, there are multiple court cases going on right now, so stay tuned for that news. If you have any questions though about what you should apply for, what, what resources are out there for you in the community? La Puerta, through Prosper Waco and, and the sponsorship of Cooper Foundation, has opened up a Spanish call center and they are taking calls in Spanish and will, if they can't answer your question, they will connect you with people who can. So in the morning...
Can we get that number?
Do you all have that?
Do you have that number?
Yes, the phone number is 254-301-4062. That is, you can call that number between eight and noon. And then from one to five, you can call 254-315-5748.
Entonces estaba hablando del dinero de stimulus, que las personas que están endocumentados y están mandando sus impuestos con un número de I-10, no van a recibir el dinero de stimulus. Tampoco personas que son ciudadanos que aplican para sus impuestos junto con una persona que tiene I-10, no van a recibir este dinero. Pero hay dos demandas en el corte en este momento, entonces esperamos que hay cambios y debes seguir escuchando las noticias sobre eso. Al mismo tiempo, hay un número, un centro de llamadas de, por la puerta, y ellos están contestando llamadas en español cada día de, pues lunes a viernes, de ocho hasta doce y uno hasta cinco. Tienen personas que están contestando los teléfonos en español y pueden darle consejo de dónde puede escuchar, encontrar ayuda, recursos aquí en la comunidad. Entonces el número en la mañana es 254-301-4062. En la tarde, 254-315-5748.
Thank you so much. That's such great information for our community. We are at 6:39, but I feel like I need to ask this question before we kind of wrap things up. We talked about four deaths in McLennan County. Three of those deaths are communities of color, two African-American, one Hispanic. We have a question here that has come in that says, has contact tracing been completed for the four individuals who have died from Corona 19, COVID-19 in McLennan County? And what is the status of contact tracing in McLennan County? So if one of our panelists could handle that question?
I can answer that. And so, yes, and I actually want to start off the question by going over some of kind of the underlying theme of what we've been talking about, which is, this is a terrible, scary virus. And I've been in medicine for 21 years and this is one that still has many of us scratching our heads. I know that this has caused a lot of sacrifice and difficulty and hardship for people. And we look around and we're like, well, we're not seeing a lot of, you know, what we were, you know, what you see in New York and other places. And part of the reason that is, is because you all have done such an amazing job of following the recommendations in our city and state and our hospitals have all done a good job of flattening that curve, which is what we talked about before, decreasing our chances of getting the virus, because we've been limiting our contact with other people, which is the only tool that we have really right now. As we move forward, which we're actually here in Waco, we're actually the good place to move forward in terms of our incidents or how many cases happen are less right now because of the really sacrifices of the community up to this point. And the way that we do that is with this contact tracing and with increased testing, which is what we talked about at the beginning. This contact tracing is the other part of the equation, which is where we're following after somebody has been, has tested positive. The health district actually goes out and finds all their contacts and close contacts. So we consider close contacts, the CDC definition is less than six feet. I think we're using three feet for three minutes is like a more defined definition that we're using. We find all those people and all the people that they were in contact with and test them. The health, health district has been doing a tremendous, really good job of doing that contact tracing and we're really grateful for that. And in that contact tracing, so they have completed all the contact tracing, was the last information that I had regarding the four deaths that we have had in Waco. And not only with those deaths, but with other positive tests, the health district discovered 12 other cases of contacts that otherwise we may have missed. The, one of the scary things about this virus is that it is very contagious. So flu virus, one person can infect another person. This virus, one person can infect three other people. So if we had not found those 12 people, you multiply that 12 by 3 and that would have been 36 people. Multiply that by 3 and you can see how all of a sudden we're in a really bad situation. But because of the hard work and courage of our health district, our, our city council, our, our county, and everybody else who has stayed home, because that actually is one of the things that made the biggest difference, we are now in a good position to continue to do that contact tracing and the health district feels ready for the challenge.
Just to, I'm gonna do a brief translation. Entonces una de las cosas que necesitamos hacer para obtener el virus bajo control es no solo hacer pruebas de una persona que sospechamos que tiene el virus, pero una vez una persona es positiva, queremos encontrar sus contactos. Encontrando sus contactos y aislando, aislándolos de otras personas es la mejor manera que tenemos para reducir, que haya más de este virus en la comunidad. Hasta ahorita, nuestro centro de salud público ha hecho un fabuloso trabajo en buscar todos los contactos de todas las personas que han sido positivas. En buscar esos contactos, han encontrado 12 otras personas que también tenían la infección y han podido aislarlos del resto de la comunidad. Y la pregunta era si el departamento de salud ha buscado todos los contactos de las personas que se murieron. Y la respuesta es sí, han hecho eso y sí, ahorita estamos en un buen lugar donde podemos encontrar los contactos. Si ustedes dejan las recomendaciones que estamos haciendo y empiezan a tener fiestas, y empiezan a visitar, ir a la tienda por cualquier cosita, entonces más infecciones van a hacer y puede ser que entonces no tengamos suficientes pruebas, no tengamos suficiente habilidad de seguir todos los contactos. Por eso ahorita todavía, por favor, tengan cuidado, quédense en casa, solo salgan por lo esencial, vayan a ir a comprar comida una vez por semana, lávense las manos, hagan ejercicio y vengan al doctor cuando lo necesiten, siguiendo las precauciones que recomendamos.
Thank you, thank you. It is now 6:45, but we're gonna run just a little bit more. I have a couple of questions that individuals really want to ask. And this is, the first one is involving the economic impact and then the second piece to that is the moving forward. So I want to ask this of our elected officials, and if Councilwoman Bearfield could, could begin this. Nationwide, minority small business owners are disproportionately affected by the coronavirus. We also know that they access financing at a much lesser rate. Are we seeing this to be true in McLennan County? And what is the message from the panel to our local minority small business owners?
So that is a, a great question and the answer, of course, is yes. Not necessarily in dealing with the funding from the CARE Act, but, but over the past few years, if you look at the census tracts that hold the majority of people of color, so if you're looking at Census Track 14, 15, 13, 14, and 15, which are heavily communities of color, you'll see that out of all of those groups, the, the, the access to funding is considerably lower. So if out of those, those census tract, if, if there may be only 17 business loans given out of the 1,312 that were of the whole area, so less than 2%. And so if you gather them all together, then the total of those is only 2.4%. And that's during, of all the businesses during that time. So you see that, that we are already disproportionately underfunded and that's something that if you look at any, any resource from the, any of the business, business organizations, NAACP, Congressional Black Caucus, any of them will tell you that our access to funding is, is, has always been less, lesser than our Anglo counterparts, but it's especially hard dealing with COVID-19. So some of the things that we probably should do ourselves in the communities of color and businesses of color, this is a, a good time to continue to push for organizations and entities like CDFI, Community Development Finance Institutions, and start working, working more with our chambers of commerce. We have our African-American Chamber of Commerce, we have our Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce. These are people and resources that are here to assist businesses in getting, you know, getting the resources they need, getting access to technical assistance that they need, because it's, it's gonna be harder to get the funding. What we do know is that in all the money that's been given federally, there's not a, the, the data breakdown from a federal perspective is not as good as what we were able to do, you know, regarding the health, the health database and, and perspectives of that. But, you know, it's, it's known that, that those numbers, that we are denied bank loans, when I say we, I mean African-American community, denied bank loans at a 53% rate higher than the Anglos. And when we do get those loans, those interest rates are at a 7.3 higher percentage interest rate. So, you know, what we, we gonna have to do is really, really look at how we have our ability to partner and, and use our ingenuity to, you know, hone our craft and do our business with, and also figure out how to run our business. We may not be able to do it by ourselves, but these are the times that we realize really, pardon the pun, break down those silos and utilize the resources that are in our community. You know, what do you do? You look for those organizations like, you know, Startup Waco and SBDC and, and ask for the help. The city of Waco was, the staff of the city of Waco, so shout out to Galen Price and Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson, for figuring out a way to find money and resources for our smaller businesses, our businesses 10 and, 10 and under, to have some access to this capital, because they weren't getting their applications for the loan, for PPP loans or for the idle loans granted. So, you know, they found money with, from HUD, from the Community Development Block Grant and brought in 400 and, was it $415,000 from CDBG, which was matched by our McLennan County, Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corps. And so $830,000 was made available for grants, not loans, for our small businesses. And, you know, we've... And, you know, we've been encouraging the, um, Business and Finance Work Group has been pushing the information out. So we've been leveling up with our chambers of commerce as far as getting information out to our businesses to make sure that our communities of color and our businesses of color are getting their applications in. They're walking them through. You know, we know that there's some, some issues that will come up. I mean, if I don't have access to the internet or if, if, those are the things, we've made those resources available in print. And they had, they opened up some businesses where you were able to, to print out the application and walk through it. And so we're trying to do the things to make the resources that we have that available to our businesses of color. But it's going to take some work from us. It's going to take, um, as we, and I, we being a business owner, if you're going to reach up, you need to reach back too. So you're going to have to ask for the help if you need it. You know, you're going to have to find the resource, you know, utilize the resources that are available here. We have a wealth of knowledge. Um, there are, with Startup Waco here, with the SBDC here, uh, private consultants like Norkis, who are doing things for our businesses of color. The resources are available for us. And, you know, the thing about being disenfranchised is that we've been here before, um, from time. You know, we've had, for, but from an economic standpoint, think nine eleven, think the Great Recession. You know, think, these are the things that are harder for our communities of color. You know, we can overcome, but we're just going to have to utilize the things that we have, get with our resources, expand our networks and, and not just during this crisis, but post-crisis and then the aftermath of the crisis. But we can do it because we've done it before.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Sabido, would you like to add to that? Thank you. That was very great.
Yeah, Councilmember Bearfield did a great job. The only thing I just wanted to add is that, um, you know, she spoke a little bit, well, she, she spoke about the Small Business Recovery Grant that the city of Waco and the, uh, county launched together. And, um, we are trying to be as equitable as possible with that process as well to make sure that individuals, businesses of color and even Spanish-speaking businesses that are in our community, that pay taxes, that hire our employees, um, that, that get, uh, um, take advantage of that loan as well. You know, one thing that I wanted to add is one group that we, uh, have not mentioned yet, it's, it's the Asian-Americans and, and they've been impacted, you know, even nationally through this COVID nineteen. In, in many parts, maybe not here in McLennan County, but in many parts, they, they've had to close their businesses and race and, and restaurants because of the racism that they've encountered. Not so much, uh, the economic impact, but just the impact, the backlash that they're receiving from the community. And so it's also very important that we support our Asian-American entrepreneurs and local business owners as well, just as much as our African-American and Hispanic businesses. I just think that we're all just together and like Councilmember Bearfield said, um, if you need to help, ask for it, please, because we have a great group here, a great network in McLennan County that, that can, that are more than willing to partner with you and, and help out.
And the PPP and idle loan, there's still money there. Each way they're, they're looking, I, I was on a call with the Congressional Black Caucus and, you know, they're, they're looking at what this next package is looking like. Cause I think we're at care three point five or four or something. But, um, if you have, if you haven't applied, apply. Because, you know, those are still opportunities to, um, get access to that funding, you know, stay in the queue. The thing is, is it's about relationship with your local bankers. And we know that, that historically that hasn't been the strongest relationship, but this is an opportunity that we, um, now that our eyes have seen and our eyes are exposed to what the truth is, we can make that pivot, um, to build relationships with our community banks and encourage them to build relationships in communities of color because our money is still green.
Could I jump in, Ramona? Just, I got a call this week, um, asking if someone who is a non-citizen can apply for the Waco Small Business Loan. And what I've been informed about the city is that even if you don't have a social security number, you can still apply for the loan if you're completing all the other requirements like paying taxes because it's not illegal for someone who is a non-citizen to own a business here. And, and so then the second question is, will that affect an immigration case? And the answer is no. So if you are a non-citizen owner of a, a small business here in Waco, you should feel comfortable to apply for that loan.
Entonces recibí una llamada esta semana sobre, um, los préstamos para los negocios aquí en Waco y que hay fondos aquí en, en la ciudad de Waco para esos negocios. Y no es problema si usted no tiene números sociales, todavía puede aplicar y, y calificar para esas préstamos y no va a afectar su caso migratorio o su estatus migratorio si recibe este dinero.
Y, y Domás, Ana Lee quiero decir que este no es un, una, un préstamo. Es como una beca que le estamos dando dinero, así que no tiene que pagar el dinero, brother.
Even better.
Well, I tell you, it is six fifty-six and we have gone over and I, we, it feels like we're just getting into it. I hope, uh, that we can continue this, uh, having more of these, uh, town halls. Uh, we, I mean, I have so many questions I want to ask each of you. And we do have a few more questions from our audience that we just cannot take at this time. But where could we go? I want someone to tell us, where can we go in continuing this conversation, on the economic impact, on the medical impact? Where can I get more of my questions answered on that? I know we've talked about the African-American Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, Prosper Waco has been talked about. So if someone could kind of collapse all of what we're, we're just getting into this good stuff, mentioning even the Asian population, yes.
Okay, Ramona, uh, I want to address that, but I also wanted to add to the, uh, last discussion on economic impact, that, uh, Small Business Disaster Recovery Loan, there are funds in there that have been, um, placed in their, the county part for business, small businesses that reside in McLennan County, but they're not, uh, in Waco. You're outside the city limits of Waco, but you are in McLennan County. So those businesses that would be eligible for that program can apply to that program also. As far as the continuing of this discussion, uh, I want to thank everyone who turned in tonight. I think it was, uh, very productive and beneficial. And like you said, there's no way we would have been able to address everything in the time that we had. Mother Teresa said, "When a poor person dies of hunger, it has not happened because God did not take care of them. It happened because neither you nor I wanted to give that person what they needed." I think that's really appropriate for the crisis that we are under. The people in the community suffering in COVID nineteen are not doing it because God does not take care of them or does not care for them. We have not given them what they need. Uh, we have not given them access to preventive healthcare. And in the immigrant community, we have not given them access to services. And so, um, I hope that the chambers listening will take up the mantle for future discussions because we need to look at how policymakers and policy shakers can put in policy, things that will keep, uh, people safe. We don't need to have a disease that attacks us. And the reason you're suffering more is because you don't have access or you don't have healthcare. And I think that's something that we can address at the policy level. And so I do hope that our, our chambers of commerce, uh, there are other, uh, social organizations in our community will continue the conversation. We need more on, uh, the immigrant community and we need to delve into more of the impact on the African-American community. But I do thank everyone for tuning in today. COVID nineteen affects everyone regardless of ethnicity, race, religion or documented status. I think if it's never been true before, it's true now. We are our brother's keeper. What impacts my brother impacts me. And so I hope what we leave from this town hall is that we do need further discussion, but we do need to understand that we have to come up with solutions for the issues that have been highlighted by COVID nineteen. Because, um, you know, uh, fences only as strong as weakest link. And, uh, individuals suffering to no fault of their own, I think, falls on the shoulders of society.
If, if I could try to answer that as well?
Yes, please.
Great. So I, and I'm going to translate soon because I don't want our Spanish speakers to feel left out of it. But I think that, um, one of the things to highlight is that there are so many unknowns. And the other thing to highlight is that this is a fluid situation, that things change from one day to the next, that we're still trying to figure out where this is going, what the best ways for us to respond are. And the slow openings that we're doing and trying to, wanting to return to normal, and I know that all of us want to return to normal, um, but, um, there's still so many unknowns. So I know that we have more questions. I think eventually if there is enough interest, we could try to put something else together to continue the conversation. The other, um, ways, at least if you have medical questions, because we want to be accessible to the community. Family Health Center was started to try to address some of the needs of our community. I gave you that number early on and it'll be available for you. Um, give us a call, come in. I, along with, um, Lieutenant Jackson Griggs and Dr. Mike Harden, um, have been doing Facebook Live on Fridays at ten. Ana Lee Luper is going to join us tomorrow to discuss more immigration issues. So feel free to jump on and try to send us some questions through that. But we want, all of us want to be available to, to answer your questions because we're in this with you together. And if you, um, are feeling overwhelmed with not knowing what's going on, it's more likely that it's going to take us longer to get out of this. So ask questions, ask for help, we're here, we want to be able to answer that for you. I'm going to translate that to Spanish. Entonces la pregunta es, todavía ya se acabó nuestro tiempo y hay tantas más preguntas. Uh, y nosotros estamos tan agradecidos que pudieron estar con nosotros hoy. Pero cómo vamos a contestar las preguntas? La comisaria Patricia Miller estaba diciendo, estamos en esta situación, no, porque Dios no nos quiere. Dios nos da todo lo que necesitamos para estar, estar bien. Pero pues porque nosotros ahorita no hemos encontrado la manera de ayudarnos el uno al otro. Necesitamos cambiar eso, parte de poder cambiar eso, seguir esta conversación. Nosotros queremos tener, ser accesibles a ustedes. Si hay bastante interés, es posible que hagamos otros de estos ayuntamientos en un futuro. Pero mientras, hay muchos lugares donde puedes buscar por respuestas. Los viernes a las diez, en la página de Facebook de la Family Health Center, yo hago, tomo preguntas en vivo. Mañana estoy muy agradecida que Ana Lee va a estar con nosotros. Entonces vamos a seguir la conversación y mientras manténganse seguros.
Thank you so much. I want to, uh, have this last quote by Dr. Keen before I thank everybody for participating. Dr. Keen said, "I have the audacity to believe that people everywhere can have three meals a day for their bodies, education and culture for their minds and dignity, equality and freedom for their spirits. I believe what self-centered men have torn down, other-centered people will build up. And I see this panelists as those other centered people who are connecting our community to keep it safe, to make sure we're prosperant on the economic levels. And so I would like to thank you, our panelists, for tonight. I want to thank those who submitted questions for this panel. And I would also like to thank the city of Waco, McLennan County and our Family Health Center for this event and good evening.